A lot of those things on this Oregon project, the mother farm.
Yeah.
The streets farm.
Yeah, and what are we doing for home?
Exactly. Now we're talking. Okay, now we're talking. Now we're talking.
Yeah.
The whole thing.
Thank you.
Right, I know. Yeah, yeah, dude. I had lunch with her, or coffee with her.
Oh, I forgot my readers again. Dead gum. Some day, someday I will remember them. Oh, check out these mics. Wow, are we ever wired for sound.
Yes, they are. They're very sensitive.
Yeah, wow. Okay, well, what a blessing. But thank you, Mary. Thank you. This is not just the agenda. You gave me the whole nine yards and I love you for it. Thank you.
So, they need some good...
Well, thank you, Gabe.
Wow.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna announce who you are. And, and your other life too.
Sure, if you'd like to.
Okay. When's the light coming on?
I brought a Kleenex too, just in case, because God knows.
I'll take this off, I guess. I'm already in the building.
Yeah. Unless you need to go through a door somewhere.
Right. Morning. Hello, 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 how are you?
Breathless.
You just run over here from, from the, from the building, from your restaurant?
From the restaurant, yeah. Karen and I have a lot of meetings these days, a lot of meetings. So forgive me, didn't have a chance to change clothes, but I'll be more presentable on Wednesday. That's just all there is to it.
As soon as you get presentable, then we're gonna...
Yeah, I know, I know. Yeah.
Those are very sensitive mics, man, I'll tell you.
Yeah, you did a good job adjusting them. Super good job.
Bringing the rates so I can hear this.
My friend in Great Britain really appreciated the picture.
Ooh, that's a gavel and a half.
It's four. Oh, it is. It says four here.
Are we doing hybrid today as well?
Can you hear me?
Is there...
Um, not much. Okay, good. Marilyn, could I ask you a favor?
Yeah.
Or either one of you, anybody. I just need a little reminder that I want to bring readers. And I forget until I'm sitting here.
Bring what?
I'll get a special pair and leave them here. I just need to do that. Yeah, because I can see but not this...
I can, I can remind you.
Thank you. I, I would so appreciate it. I'd like to bring them by Wednesday's meeting. Thank you.
No, it wasn't mine.
I know, you came to the rescue last time, but I'm not gonna ask this time. We'll be okay.
Don't ask Matthew about that.
With the readers. I forgot my readers again. But it's okay. There's like two minutes.
I know, I want the drawers back.
It's okay. I can read. I just, I mean, I read this before. I, I have gone through it. I have gone through it, so... Jeez, I just, there's been too many, there have been so many things to juggle that I just, I, I keep forgetting.
Four o'clock.
Yeah, I'm going to. I'm gonna bring some on Wednesday, because Marilyn's gonna help me remember, so...
Good afternoon. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. I'm welcome to Monday, July twenty-sixth, work session with the Albany City Council. I'd like to call the meeting to order and do a quick roll call.
Mayor Alex Johnson the second.
Here.
Councillors Olson.
Here.
Novak.
Here.
Bartholomew.
Here.
Kupczynski. Johnson.
Here.
Ann Smith.
Here.
Five councillors present here.
Thank you very much, Gabe. Before we get started, I'd like to introduce everyone to Gabe Shepherd. He is taking our minutes for us. I don't know what his official title was with the city, but I want you to also know that we have a wolf in the hen house. He is a Albany, I mean, a Corolla City councillor as well. So, welcome and thank you for joining us today. Um, business from the public. Uh, we have no business from the public, so thank you very much, Gabe, for that. And the mics are really sensitive today. Uh, next agenda item is AMC two twenty-two dot six-six dot zero-seven-zero, Personal Services Contracts Amendment. Uh, Director Jaeger's gonna speak with us today on page three of your packet.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I don't know if you can hear me very well. Um, I feel like I'm really close to this, but if you needed me to talk louder, I can do that. Uh, so on Wednesday, we'll, we'll be bringing forward an ordinance that will allow us to amend our personal service contract code in order to better align it with other legal and court personnel procurement. Uh, right now, the judge, as well as a city attorney, use different methods of procurement. Uh, our current procurement for public defenders has been very informal. It's been very word of mouth. Somebody applies and then the judge goes over the application and then we'll hire them. We pay fifty dollars an hour, and frankly, we never know what those charges will be because it's so, um, we just have no way of determining how many people will be using those services. And if we hire a defense firm, we'll be able to keep a, a better, uh, hold on what those costs are, and also we'll have some consistency in how our different, uh, defendants are being treated and whether they need to go to another city or if they can be seen here in town. So, we will be bringing that to you on Wednesday. Um, if anybody has any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer those.
The council? Uh, Councillor Olson has something.
Uh, yes, how much is the, uh, present, uh, system costing us per year?
I don't have that information with me. Um...
Uh, can you, off the top of your head, give me the nearest hundred or thousand or so?
I cannot, but I can get that information for you.
And how much is it gonna cost to hire a firm, retain a firm per year?
We don't know that at this point. Um, we were hoping that it would be somewhere about a hundred thousand dollars a year, potentially, but we don't, we would have to negotiate that with the firm.
So, uh, Councillor Novak.
Yeah, I just, I wanna piggyback on that and say that I think it would be good to have those numbers before we...
Yeah.
Move ahead on agreeing to something. It would be really important to know the cost.
I can certainly provide those informa, that information for you before the Wednesday council meeting.
So, so I do have a question. So, the question I have is that, are we gonna go out to an open bid? Or we have somebody in mind?
We would not do an open bid. Um, we would work with HR to accept applications, and then there would be a panel consisting of, uh, Judge Reed.
Okay, so it's more than one person. Okay, good.
Court staff and Peter.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank, thank you. Councillor Olson?
Does the judge use any, well, judgment as to which attorney might be more appropriate for a given case?
We would have Judge Reed be on the panel. Uh, I think that, in general, any of the public defenders we have would do a good job with any of the cases that we get.
Well, I'm thinking there's different kinds of cases. There's, um, automotive cases, there's, um, public disturbance cases, there's menacing cases. I'm thinking different attorneys might be more effective defenders, depending on the case. And I can recall one time back in the seventies, I happened to sit in on the judge. Turned out the defender was more of a prosecutor than a defender, and I thought that the poor guy that was, uh, up before the judge really got a raw deal out of, uh, out of that case, so, uh... I, I'm kinda wondering about hiring the same guy to do the, the defending every time.
We currently...
Maybe you can give me some good arguments, either now or next, uh, next Wednesday, as to why we ought to do this.
So, Gina, can you, can you guys hear me?
Oh, that scared me. Okay.
You can? Okay.
Go ahead, go ahead, Sean. See your attorney.
Thank you. Um, I apologize for not being there. I'm, I'm actually in, in, uh, southern Michigan tonight. Um, one of the, uh, Councillor Olson, how they, how the judge appoints court-appointed lawyers now is that when they are arraigned, uh, at their first appearance, the judge will ask if they need a court-appointed attorney. If they, if they answer yes, he puts, he gives them an attorney, and it's based on who's next on the list. There, he doesn't look to see which attorneys specialize in certain areas, if they do at all. Um, it's always criminal attorneys and, you know, people who deal in criminal law, and they're on a list, and it's basically whose turn it is to get, get the next case. Um, and so there's not a lot of thought that goes into that, that process when they do it that way now. One of the things we were concerned with, um, is that often, um, court-appointed lawyers who apply to be on the, on the, um, on the list don't have offices in Albany, and, and we find that to be problematic because a lot of the people who are con, are accused of crimes don't have modes of transportation to get them to Eugene or to Salem, or even to Corvallis, where some of these court-appointed lawyers' offices are. So they're ordered by the judge to appear, to go meet with their attorney, but they really have no means to do so, especially if they're, you know, homeless and have been charged with one of the crimes that, you know, homeless people normally are, like a trespass crime or something like that. And so we wanted to make sure, as one of the criteria, is that the lawyer who is, or the firm has a, has a presence, has an office in the city of Albany, so that people can actually get to their attorney and meet their attorney and, and get, um, adequate representation. And, um, and like I think Gina said at the very beginning, right now, they're currently paying the defense lawyers fifty dollars an hour. I don't believe that number's gone up since nineteen ninety. And there's been some concern on the judge's part, um, as well as the court staff, that we could risk getting an ACLU, uh, complaint filed against us because we're not providing adequate representation to criminal defendants, um, or alleged criminal defendants, uh, when we give them court-appointed attorneys, because we haven't increased that, and having a firm represent them will kind of alleviate that, that issue as well, so...
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Um, Matt, one thing I'd like to happen is, we didn't know he was on the line, so is there a way we can know who's on the hybrid section of the meeting, in the future meetings? I'd appreciate that. Council, you have anything else? Uh, Director Jaeger?
One more comment that I have. Um, given Judge Reed's background with the, the, um, criminal defense bar, I think he is uniquely suited to evaluate the candidates that'll be applying for this contract. So I, I, that gives me a lot of confidence in who they choose.
But again, they, they need to choose, they're gonna be choosing from people who live in Albany, correct?
Yes.
From represent...
Who have offices in Albany.
Who have offices in Albany. Okay.
Thank you. Uh, councillors, anything over here? So, would you like to see Director Jaeger back? Go ahead, Councillor Johnson.
So, these defense attorneys are different than the three attorneys that we have to back up Judge Reed. Is that correct?
That's correct. Those are his pro temps. These are public defenders.
Right. All right. Who is?
We, we hire, we have both pro temps that will back up Judge Reed when he's...
Okay.
Out of the office.
That's right.
And then we also have public defenders that we assign to defendants who, who need them.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, that surprised me that we don't have contracts with someone right now. That is, um, how can the people be represented correctly if they can't even get to them? So, yeah, I think we need to really look into that. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you come back with us on Wednesday? Thank you. Hello. Next on the agenda, thank you, Director Jaeger. Next on the agenda is Housing Affordability Project. Uh, Matthew Rutgers, Director of Community Development Commission, pages four through seven.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Evening.
So, uh, tonight I came to talk, or this afternoon, I guess, to talk about housing affordability. So, in May of this last year, uh, Director Blaine, my predecessor, had come to you, um, at a work session, discussed the Blaine Division's work plan and current priorities. And both the Planning Commission and City Council ranked housing affordability as their top priority, um, providing us direction to return at a later work session, which is why I'm here today, to discuss scope and public engagement strategies. Um, so like many city, cities across Oregon, Albany faces a housing crisis. Can everybody hear me okay?
No.
Not quite. No.
A little closer.
So, Albany faces a housing crisis.
That's not helping.
Is that better?
Yeah, better.
Okay.
Yes. Thank you.
So, when we talk about this, we need to remind ourselves that housing affordability is not the same issue as affordable housing. Um, it's a much broader, far-reaching issue. Uh, the faces of this issue are not just those considered when we talk about affordable or low-income housing. These are an aging population looking for a smaller home. They're a family looking to afford to buy their first home, or maybe their first apartment to move into, uh, moving out of their parents' house. Um, and yes, it even means those that are, are, uh, have the means to purchase a new home, but aren't able to find one that's in a reasonable price or the size that they're looking for. Um, Albany, Albany's housing needs for more diverse sizes, styles, price, and ownership opportunities far exceed the community's current supply. Like other communities, Albany's not yet developed, developed a detailed, actionable plan, um, to encourage or facilitated, facilitate these needed housing types, um, or address the inequities in housing. What we're not yet required to develop was known as a Housing Production Strategy, or an HPS, um, in line with the council's directions, we're, we're committed to evaluating and potentially implementing strategies now to provide needed housing for all of our residents. In support of this, this commitment, staff had come to you several months ago with a opportunity to apply for a grant through DLCD, uh, which we have, have done. That, that grant, um, would allow us, or if successful, um, would provide for a housing implementation planner, or a consultant, to help us prepare housing, or housing implementation plan, or a HIP, is what they're known as. We're, we're not anticipating results from that grant application back until September, so that's a, a pretty big gap. Fortunately, there's enough work to be done on housing affordability that we can start a lot of that work now. Um, and it, it wouldn't be wasted work if we are successful in the grant. It would just be able to be folded into the, to the, the actual HIP, um, or, or housing invitation, housing implementation plan. So, you know, with housing affordability being a, a major component, um, of the HIP, there, there's a few things that we try to kind of align those, and, and two of those things are, we can go ahead and get started on what's our public outreach look like, and what are our areas of focus. So I wanted to pause, or actually start talking about the areas of focus for a moment. Um, we've evaluated four main areas of focus, uh, for this housing affordability project. These initial focus areas and sub-items, uh, were developed based on the recent work with the HNA and, um, the expounding, Expanding Housing Options Project, which I'm sure most of you are, all, all are familiar with, and maybe, may know it as HB two thousand one code amendments that we're working on. So you can find the areas of focus in your packets on page five and six. Um, I can certainly run through, uh, all those if you'd like, uh, or take any questions that you have. I did, did want to remind everybody, this isn't the final list. Uh, it's not all the areas of focus. It's not all the sub-items. You know, this is really gonna get flushed out with, uh, how we move forward with our public outreach, and what the stakeholder groups look like, or how, uh, council chooses to, to, um, implement public outreach for this project. So with that, I'll kind of segment over to what does the public outreach look like, or public engagement portion. Um, with the broad nature of all the areas and sub-items being evaluated and discussed, it'll be critical to consider a balanced, yet wide range of perspectives. Uh, that balance drives complexity. It will be important to consider actionable plan items from multiple perspectives. Uh, what should the community look like? What would, what would you like to live next to? Um, what are the potential positive or negative fiscal impacts to citizens, residents, developers, um, businesses? And what are the impacts on city resources? Oh, there we go. Whether it be fire, police, uh, utilities, or parks. Uh, staff has, has looked at these and, and we've got some suggestions in, in the memo, um, to talk about, uh, how this work effort is best served, um, by involving the community in several ways. Uh, a few of our suggestions involve, uh, developing a, a project website, uh, conducting community group presentations, or targeted outreach to interest groups, uh, also known as, uh, could be considered stakeholders. Also, holding multiple open houses, and finally, uh, the establishment of a Housing Affordability Task Force. Uh, we, Albany's used the task force approach several times in the past, such as the Mayor's Business Ready Task Force, um, or the Albany Development Code Task Force that was done here just several years ago. Uh, staff's suggesting a similar approach here. Uh, the task force could represent a cross-section of the community and, and help guide intensification of areas that impact housing affordability from beginning to end. Uh, however, the task force must not be so large, such as reaching a consensus is difficult to do. Uh, if the council feels a task force is appropriate, staff's provided or offered, um, some, some representation or kind of a starting point of what that could look like, and that's shown in your packet on...
Page six.
Page six.
Need my old bag.
So, the, the, the next step, I, I did want to kind of note, you know, I, obviously with, uh, having just recently passed the budget, you know, the, one of the questions might be, what's, what's the budget impact here? And, uh, the, whether we go with, uh, well, I'll first talk about if we weren't successful in the grant, what does it look like for our budget? It's no budget impact. We, as this was a priority for council when we considered the budget this, this last year, um, this work is budgeted in. We're, we're, we have staff ready to go and we're going to be doing the project, so there is, there is no additional funds needed. Uh, if we talk about, if we're successful with the grant, that's a grant from DLCD, uh, we are offering a, a match with that grant, but that match comes in the form of staff time, which we've already budgeted to work on the project. So, there is, there is no budget impact, uh, on either path that we take. Uh, so really, the staff's here to, to request, you know, input on if there's areas of focus or the sub-items, like say, those will be fleshed out further. Uh, and also the, uh, public engagement process. If you were comfortable with the, the process that we provided, and then just the, as far as the makeup of, if you want to do a task force, what does that task force look like? And like I say, we've provided some suggestions in, in your packets. Um, I'm...
Council?
So, how long do you think that this, um, thank you, Matt, to have Mr. Consor. I... Blah, 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 blah.
Rutgers.
Mr. What?
Rutgers.
Rutgers. Mr. Rutgers. Um, how long is this, uh, process going to take for the Housing Implementation Plan?
So, i- if we're looking at the, when, when we talk about a housing imple, I can't talk, Housing Implementation Plan, um, that's assuming that we've got a, we're successful in our grant, and we're gonna have a consultant. When we scoped out the project, it's probably gonna take twelve to eighteen months, um, for a project of that size, because it's gonna be a plan at the end of it, something that the council can adopt, um, and move forward. It also provides a framework, you know, I talked about a Housing Production Strategy, which some cities are doing. Uh, we're not required to do one right now. Uh, if successful with the grant, one of the things that made it really actually attractive to us is we can do a Housing Implementation Plan that's, that's not, uh, a requirement of the state, but it does provide us a framework for a production strategy down the road when we are required to do one. Uh, when I talk about required, it, it's not saying that we don't want to do one. It's just the required plans are something that are gonna be very structured through the state and kind of guide where we're gonna go. Uh, this, this, uh, HIP, or Housing Implementation Plan, um, will have very loose framework. We have an idea what it's gonna look like, um, but it doesn't have, uh, all the requirements that a Housing Production Strategy would.
And that's, my next question is, the Housing Production Strategy, and what is the requirements that are coming down? And you're saying that it'd be, in the future, we would be required to do that?
Correct. Housing Production Strategies were required for communities that had a housing needs analysis completed after a certain date. Uh, we completed ours before that date, so we, we, we weren't required to do a production strategy right now. Uh, we will, in, I think it's six or seven years, have to do one. Did that answer your question?
For now.
Councillor Johnson?
I read, can you hear me? Okay. I read this, and I read it again, and I still read it again. Okay. What is the bottom line that we're looking for? I mean, we're not in the building, uh, profession. Uh, I mean, we could talk about it forever, but what is the actual purpose that we're looking for? I mean, we can't make housing prices go down. We can't make developers build in a certain spot, or do a certain, you know, type of house, or whatever. So what is the bottom line that we're looking at?
So, that, that is a fantastic question, and I, I, you know, if I had the answer to that, I would, I would be worth millions.
I know. I, that's one of the...
But really, it, it is a great question, is, and I, to be honest with you, we, we don't know, there is no, we know there's no magic bullet. Uh, so really, it's about, uh, engaging the community and engaging the stakeholders, and coming up with, um, ideas that people might have that could actually impact, uh, hor, housing affordability, um, whether that be on the, the lower end in implementation of like a construction excise tax, which I know Corvallis has, has recently done, um, and, but there's certainly some benefits with that. Um, or, I know that there's some evaluation of SDC methodologies, if there's some, uh, opportunities there. It, it's really, um, we, we've provided some suggestions in the areas of focus and sub-areas, but those are suggestions that we've kind of encountered, whether it be just as a staff level or through our housing of, uh, options, uh, work. There may be other opinions out there as we look at, um, like a task force and, uh, polling, uh, on that task force, whether it be members of different wards or, uh, industry, um, stakeholders. Uh, we, we don't really know what's gonna come out of it. You know, at, at the end of all of this, as we move forward, we'll be coming back with multiple presentations. We'll, we, we'll be reviewing all of those items and deciding whether, you know, these will actually be something that we can implement and we think will make a difference.
Yeah, 'cause I was looking at it, and I'm thinking, okay, if we do, uh, something with the SDC charges, you know, if we don't charge them, if we have tax exempt, of course, I don't know what kind of tax exemptions we could have, but there's so many different things here. I'm thinking we're shooting ourselves in the foot if we give them so much, uh, benefit, or, you know, so anyway. Peter, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Mayor?
Oh, sorry.
Oh, go ahead. Go ahead, Peter.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that we're, you know, it's, it's tempting to jump to solutions to problems, and we're at the very early stages of this. So, what, when you look at these problem areas, we're looking for input from community members, from professional associations, from businesses, to what exactly the, the problem is, and then we can go about looking for solutions to those problems. This is gonna be a, a, this has the potential to be a very big project, but I think, right now, it, it really truly is in the stage of trying to define what the problem actually is. We all know that housing affordability is a problem, but what are its component pieces, and how, how, how are they affected? So, by establishing this task force, I think that's how we, we get a good head start, or get a good start on that problem's definition.
And so, I'll jump on that as well. One of the things that, when I thought about this project, the Housing Affordability Task Force, is that we get input on economic indicators from outside of our area, and we'll implement them here, but this is our community, and so I think our community should come up with what it looks like, or what it feels like to live in the city of Albany. And if people outside are determining what we built here without consulting the people in the, our staff, in our business development, our businesses, our builders, or developers, I, I think we'd be better suited to do it ourselves, to define what we want here. And I think that's important. Instead of looking at what Chicago's doing, or Albany, New York is doing, let's, what does Albany want for itself? And those people that we put on this task force will help us determine that going forward, which makes sense for us as a family or a community to do so.
And we could, we could want forever, but what's...
I agree.
What's, you know, what's the end result gonna be?
That's, well, that's the point of the task force, is to get those brilliant people in a room, and have that battery smell going, all the brains moving, they'll figure that out. So, I, I think it's an opportunity for us to do something interesting for the city of Albany. Counselor?
Couple of things that I'd like to mention. Um, one is, I was, the first graphic that was included...
You're off my...
Yeah, I can't hear you. Okay. Sorry, I was gonna train myself. Uh, the, um, the first graphic that's in the, the packet that shows the current, um, housing stock in Albany, um, I was stunned, I guess is the best word, at the, the, um, number of single, the, the predominance of single-family owner-occupied homes as the major portion of our housing stock. That, I guess I should have known that, but... That, I guess I should have known that, but it was still startling to see in green and yellow. Another thing that I wanted to comment about is I watch a lot of business news on TV, stock market stuff, all day until it closes. And I have been carefully watching conversations that come up at least once a week regarding the housing stock and building and so on around the country. What I hear consistently from people who are developing property and building houses and is that they, their concerns are the cost and supply of building materials and the cost of labor. I have yet to hear anybody say anything about building permit fees, SDCs, I have not heard that from any, and these are big, you know, across the country things. Anyway, just wanted to mention that, because I'm sensitive to that.
I agree.
That conversation. Another thing is, I strongly support the idea of a local task force with these component members. We may not be able to ultimately affect the housing mix in Albany, but we're drawing a map for it and helping people determine what they want in their neighborhoods or completely undeveloped areas. It's nice to have that as a guideline for things as they develop. And maybe the world will shift a little bit and it will be profitable to build multifamily homes or cluster developments. And right now, it's profit-driven, so maybe that profit will come from a different segment of the market eventually. Also, the one component of the task force is labeled as partner organizations.
Right.
Can you give me some examples, like Habitat for Humanity and?
So, partner organizations would be exactly that. Habitat for Humanity, CSC, and then, and she probably knows it better.
There are lots of them.
There are lots of them, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Good, thank you.
Counsel Olson.
Oh, yeah.
Done, really?
Yes.
Counsel Olson.
I'd like to also like to comment on the tables that we have on, particularly the one on table on page four. And it's interesting that for single-family detached, the two numbers, eighty-nine and thirty-four, add up to well more than a hundred percent. And I'm curious as to just what exactly this table is supposed to represent. But nonetheless, I think it does illustrate that if you're, in order for home ownership to occur, it looks like it just about has to be single-family detached. For single-family detached, there's one percent of ownership and nine percent of rental. And for duplexes, you can get one percent of home ownership and ten percent of rental. And for the rest of it, there's just plain no home ownership. And yet, when I hear comments about what to do about retirement, and I hear comments about neighborhood livability and desirability, it's home ownership. And yet, the state is insisting that we have apartment houses and duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, and it looks like the state is driving us to a less-than-desirable city, as far as I'm concerned. And I've felt this before, and I think this illustration shows that in spades. I'm also wondering if the staff, when they print out these graphs and so forth, could use a bigger font to print them? I got a magnifying glass to work on the one on page five, and I still cannot quite make out what you were trying to illustrate here. So, yes, I'm glad we're working on home ownership, but I wish we could come up with something before a year and a half. I think homelessness is a problem that we need to be working on, and I, if we're going to put it off for a year and a half, I think that's really too long.
Well, I.
We need a better.
Counsel, what I got from Director Rutgers is that we're going to be working on things. That's what he said, I gathered that, that we'll be adding that stuff to that when it comes down to the project, the task force. So, I didn't think we're going to stop working or anything. I didn't gather that from your comment, did I?
The intent here is, this is kind of the kickoff meeting for this project. The question from Counselor Bartholomew was, you know, if we did a HIP, how long did we think it would take? And that process is much bigger. That's a twelve-to-18-month process. We're starting the project right now because it's something the council wants to start, so we're not going to wait for a determination if we're successful on our grant application, that we know that we can start moving forward elements, and if we're not successful on the grant, we're going to keep moving along with our own process. Whether the timelines on that are a little bit shorter, they could be, you know, the, one of the main goals of this is that public engagement, that's where we're going to get a lot of our good information. I caution my, not only myself, because I tend to be interested to move things along fairly quickly, is that's a process that you can't rush. You can't say, hey, I'm going to take public engagement for the next two months and then we're going to set something and put something in place. We will miss large groups of people by doing that, and we don't want to do that.
Your Honor, I'd like to respond to.
Counselor Smith.
Counselor Olson's concern about the state telling us what to do and determining what Albany's going to look like, that's the point of this project. We determine what we want to build here. Sorry, I'm offline again, but this helps us write our own rules for how to address the housing stock that we want, rather than the state telling us what to do.
So, you're going to find a way to get rid of State HB 2001?
No, not at all.
Well, that says we can't have single-family zoning anymore.
That's one interpretation of it, yes.
Yes, that's one interpretation.
I think it's.
I don't think, I don't think that's the end goal.
But from the state?
Right.
Although, I think that's what the state's trying to do.
Well, we can agree to disagree.
By developers and property owners.
Counsel Novak.
Thank you, yes. I have a question with regard to the discussion, because I found myself agreeing with everything Counselor Olson was mentioning. And so, Counselor Smith, if, am I understanding correctly, and everyone help me out here, Matthew, if we come up with our own plan, our task force, our people, our city, if we come up with a plan and we want there to be the American dream of owning your own home as opposed to, you know, multifamily or living in your own apartment, so we have, we don't have to do everything that's dictated by the state, the way the state is currently dictating. My, because this is new information to my ears and it's.
That's not, that's not.
That's not what you said.
No.
That's what I really wanted you to say. Okay, so someone, someone help me.
That is certainly not the case.
Okay.
As far as the HB 2001 is new state statute, we don't have an option to not comply with that. You know, with the Housing Options Project that we are in the process of and actually wrapping up, rather than adopting a model code that's right, basically something the state has given us, we've been able to and are working through the process of adapting that to Albany. Housing affordability project is something completely different than that. It doesn't get to negate what HB 2001 or the state statute's done, but it does allow us to kind of follow our own process and it doesn't have to always, not all of this is development code, it's not a change of development code. It can be a multitude of different things. If you look at the areas of focus and sub items, there's only a handful of those that are actually code-driven, like code changes. There's other things that we can do.
So, it's not necessarily an end to single-family dwelling?
No.
And zoning for single-family dwellings? Okay, good.
I think City Manager has a response.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, if it's all right with you, I'd like to give Ann Catlin a chance to comment.
Thank you. So, I wanted to respond to this, it is a little confusing. This discussion of different ways to improve housing affordability of all types, it would possibly incentivize the kind of housing that we need, that we think we need and that we want in our community. So, House Bill 2001 is requiring us to add middle housing. It is also requiring us to have conversations and consider three different tools. Those are the first tools on page five under potential incentives, that you need to consider those. And we thought, you know what? If you're talking about systems development charges, a construction excise tax, and tax abatement, which we already, we have some form of that, there are other ways to incentivize maybe the smaller house on a smaller lot. And what other obstacles might there be to actually getting the kind of housing that we think will be affordable, whether it's to seniors or the first-time home buyers? And so, you'll see some ideas here of other things we could do in the code that are not included or required with that middle housing piece, that we think would help get the kind of housing that we have heard there's demand for. I mean, I've heard Mayor Johnson talk about seniors that want a single-story home on a small lot. Well, that's not necessarily what is being built right now. Well, how do we, how do we incentivize that, and not necessarily monetarily incentivize, but how are we allowing for that kind of development to work out, pencil out, so that a developer would actually come in and build a 900-square-foot home instead of a 2,000-square-foot home on a 6,500-square-foot lot? So, this would really start a conversation about what else could we do, some monetary, some not, to incentivize the kind of housing we are hearing that we are not providing in the marketplace right now. And we do need to have the conversation with at least those three, but we thought, that's kind of limiting. Let's broaden this and talk about how we can tailor this to Albany.
And so, to add on to that, one of the things that, my career, most of you know what I do for a living, I've lost probably 20 clients to other states because they couldn't afford to stay here. So, they cashed out their big home, there's no small home to go to, and they're going to Idaho building duplexes and renting out one and living in the other. I've lost clients to Nevada, I've lost clients to Texas, I've lost clients to Tennessee, going back home closer to family. And I've had clients here that they're in a, you know, two-story house, no master bathroom downstairs, and they converted their family room into a bedroom. You know, so if we don't look at the options that we could possibly build or incentivize builders to build here, then we're going to continue to lose people. And on the other hand, I also have another spectrum, I've been a sports official for 23-plus years in Albany, and I'm seeing a lot of our young people in other cities because they cannot afford to live here. You know, so we do need multifamilies, so that young couple can get their first place, whether it be a duplex or a multi-room apartment or a duplex, and then earn the income, save some money, and then go buy their first home on a smaller lot, 1,500, 1,100, 1,500 square foot, so they can start their growth. And then those, the bigger homes that the seniors have, they can sell, move down, and the young folks can move up. We have to have a cycle, we have to have multiple ways of people to live comfortably and nicely in the city of Albany, and right now, we're not doing that. I mean, I just had a client sell her home here in Albany, she bought it 39 years ago for $48,000, she sold it for $480,000. So, we have to figure out ways to provide more inventory, more flexible inventory, and then dictate, we can determine what we build in the city of Albany. And I know the developers are interested in it, but we also have to understand that costs do go up, but if we're building the right-sized home, people will buy them, and if we have enough of them, people will buy them and be happy, sell their home, move down, we can keep that inventory moving. Thank you, Matt. Anybody else have anything? I think we should, I think we should get out in front of this ourselves without somebody telling us what to do.
So, the next step will be that, it sounds like everybody was supportive of a task force, so if everybody was comfortable with kind of the guide that I gave in your packets, we can move in that direction. We will come back with basically the final membership of that, you know, obviously the got-in-their selections by counselors for their ward. You won, basically, one per counselor, so we'll work with city staff to get applications for those. And then, once those are all in, I will come back for basically a confirmation of what the task force is with all the names and everything.
I would like, I think the council should have input to each position as far as the selection process, and ultimately, we're being held accountable for what comes out of this. So, I think we should have, like you said, one pick per person, and then the other ones will have input as far as the final decision on them. I'd greatly appreciate that.
Okay. Sounds good.
Yes.
And I recall reading that you were looking at having a counselor on the task force as well. I want to remind you all that when we had this discussion a few months ago, I had said that I would very much like to be on this committee, so I'd like to spearhead it with the words I used. And is that you, Alex?
That's.
Okay, I'll yield to you.
Yeah.
I'll yield to you.
Yes.
The diagram or the plan here is a little confusing. So, you have one planning commissioner representative, a city council representative, one, developer representative, just two, and then the next one, residents, resident of each council ward, and then it says two.
That makes, that's a good question.
I thought if we want one for council, that's going to be seven, so.
So, seven, nine, 10, 11.
So, the final count on the task force would be 13, which is probably about as big as we'd want to go on a task force?
Okay, so that resident of each council ward dash two means nothing, really.
So, it's, well, it's resident of each council ward, so there'd be two per ward.
From each ward.
One per each, one per counselor, so each counselor gets to pick a resident.
A total of six.
For a total of six.
Two counselors per ward, Counsel Johnson. There are two counselors per ward.
Per ward, that's.
So, each counselor, you're three, and then there's three B, I'm two, or one B, that's what you're saying, right? That's how this is laid out?
Yes.
I want to make sure I'm understanding that correctly.
I think this is a copy-editing situation.
Yeah.
If two wasn't there, we wouldn't be confused.
Exactly.
One for council member, easy to understand.
Yep. And then the partner organization stuff, I know we're thinking of, you know, Habitat and all of these and stuff, but I think someone from the Home Builders Association should be included too, because they're the ones building the houses. They're going to know what it costs, what they, you know, how, the best way, because, you know, you buy board by so many feet, and if you buy, build a house, it's going to cost more because you have to buy more lumber, and so, I really think that they, someone from them should, that organization should be included.
Okay.
Rather than just low-income people.
And then, good thing about the way that we've approached this is we'll have a task force, but then multiple stakeholder groups as we reach out, so we'll actually reach out to members of the industry in their own kind of group, because we want to get input from everybody.
Yeah, and I think that's a good idea, you know, just not the people dealing with the low income or anything like that, it's got to be.
It'd be a good, I think it'd be a good distribution, because I know this is not specifically for low-income housing, it's multi-housing, so it'd be multifamily, duplex, triplex, so it's going to cover a lot of bases. So, I think we'll figure it out as a council.
Okay.
Thank you very much. I think we should, are we going to give them a thumbs up as they come back with the, good?
Oh, one minute.
Give me a nod, thank you, Matthew, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel, for the discussion. Thank you, City Manager and Ann Catlin for bringing that to us.
Thanks.
Next item on the agenda is the American Rescue Plan Funds Evaluation. City Manager Peter Trotek will be bringing that to us, pages eight through 15.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good afternoon. In your agenda packet for the week, you've seen our information on the city's allocation of ARPA funds. And you know a little bit of the history of it, that in mid-March, President Biden signed the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. It contained $1.9 trillion of relief in many different forms to help recover from the effects of the coronavirus pandemic. Substantial funding was provided to local governments, and cities over 50,000 received their allocations directly from the federal government. Albany's allocation totals $8.4 million, with $4.2 million received in May, and the remaining $4.2 million to be received in May of 2022, next year. It's important to keep in mind that as you, as you look at this stuff, that Oregon was not affected like most states. not affected like most states. We don't have a sales tax in the state. So, when, when some states were hit with the pandemic and the immediate loss of sales and business, they took a very drastic hit to their operating budgets. And a lot of this assistance was designed for those 48 other states that suffered in that way. For us, the analog was transient lodging tax and our parks, parks revenues. So, when the U.S. Treasury provides guidance that indicates that these funds can be used in certain ways, much of that guidance is designed for those jurisdictions that suffered immediate losses due to those immediate and drastic drops in revenue. For us, in May, we saw, when we found out about this, we sought some community feedback on the use of these funds. 20 residents representing businesses, social and community services, education, reviewed 15 projects that had been proposed by staff and ranked them. We provided a staff evaluation of each project against the criteria that you saw in your packets. What was the timeline? Could the project be completed by the deadline to expend the funds, which was December 31st of 2024? Would it yield recurring savings? To what extent would the investment save future operating costs? Or to what extent would it avoid long-term operating costs? Number three, assistance to citizens, how much of our community would benefit from the return on investment, and to what extent would marginalized communities benefit? And then the fourth criterion was promoting long-term economic development. Does the investment stimulate or leverage private investment? So, you have in your packet the combined ranking, as well as the staff evaluation of each proposed project. And I'm going to put the screen up here so you can maybe see it a little bit easier. There we go. The 20 responses have been combined into Attachment A in your packet, which shows the combined group ranking, and it's on the screen here. Respondents were asked to rank each project from 1 to 15, and an abbreviated version of the comments received is also in your packet. ARPA funds are one-time funds, and as such, they shouldn't be used to plug operating budget holes. All the projects considered in Attachment A that you see up there on that list support capital or major maintenance needs, except for the restoration of lost funds, and there are appropriate uses of one-time funds. And staff provided the following recommendations, since we don't have unlimited, we have, our limit, of course, is 8.4 million. But council should be reminded that the decision on how to spend these funds belongs to the council. So, you're certainly not obligated to accept the staff recommendation, or even to limit yourself to any of the 15 projects you saw on the last slide. So, tonight, we'd like to offer the chance to ask any questions that you might have, hear any discussion you might have, and then on Wednesday, we would look for some direction on how to, how to spend the funds. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, thank you, Peter. Counsel?
I do have one comment. I noticed number nine, if you wouldn't mind putting that back up on the screen, when I was first going through the packet the other day, COVID pivot business forgivable land or loan grant fund. And then that was, that was one that you passed over, or the committee passed over. I just want to point out for the record that there were businesses that suffered an immediate and devastating loss of income, businesses that have been badly hurt. And, you know, maybe not a lot, I don't know, but I am familiar with some, and it was immediate and devastating. And I'm a little bit saddened that that was not on the final list.
Yeah, the, the thinking there, and I would invite Gina to speak up as well, but the thinking there was that since March, when, when ARPA funds were announced, there have been a lot of programs that have been announced that are separate business, that are aimed directly for business. In fact, some that are aimed directly at nonprofits, some at restaurants, some at theaters or closed businesses. So, that kind of changed that priority a little bit and moved it a little bit further down. But if the council is desirous of doing that, there's certainly no reason why we couldn't revisit that.
Thank you, Peter. Another counsel.
If I might just finish on that thought. And at the risk of sounding self-interested, since you all know my family has a restaurant, with regard to the restaurant business, I just want to give you some information that you may be completely unaware of, since you're not in the restaurant business. There was something called the Restaurant Revitalization Fund, and that was open for a time, and they were even giving priority to veteran-owned businesses, female-owned businesses, whatever, which gave a portion of the population that works in that field and has that situation reason to hope. But what you probably don't know is that, I'll just use the business with which I am most familiar, a business which would have received anywhere from $350,000 to $495,000 from the Restaurant Revitalization Act, but I'm referring to our own. We missed the deadline, we were devastated, and then we found out that all these businesses that did not miss the deadline, that were promised hundreds of thousands of dollars to revitalize their badly damaged businesses, instead received letters from the SBA saying, "We're so sorry, you're not getting anything because we're being sued." So, just so you know, the programs are out there, and that's good, but that doesn't necessarily mean that there are beneficiaries to those programs. And again, that's why I mentioned to you that you might want to at least consider the fact that while those programs are out there, they run out of money, they're not refunded, or, you know, people are led to believe that this money is coming, and they hire staff, and they pay bonuses, and they bring in more equipment, or whatever their situation is, and then they get a letter, "Too bad for you, we're so sorry, you get nothing." So, just be aware that just because there are other programs out there, that doesn't necessarily mean that an individual or business that has suffered devastation for a year and a half is profiting from those things that are out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. No, no, that. Any other councils have anything? Okay, so I saw Stacy's face first, Counsel, or Bethel's first. Well, Counsel Johnson and Counsel Olson at work.
So, I saw that number five, membrane, I don't know what AMWTP membrane modules is, and I would like to know more about that. And also, how come it dropped off of the, of the final projects? And was it that we already had it in the budget?
The AMWT is Albany-Millersburg Water Treatment Plant, and the membrane modules are looked at, and I would invite Chris to comment, although Chris is back for her first day, first day back in the office. But those membrane modules are looked at largely as consumables. So, while this could be used for that, it might not be the best use.
Thank you.
Director?
Yeah.
Director Bailey, please accept our condolences and loss of your files.
Yes.
It's good to see you, and welcome back.
No.
A little closer.
It's not on.
If you talk to the side.
Talk to the side.
Talk to the side of it.
No, that one's just not on. It's not on.
Or just shout.
Really? Okay, there you go. Yeah. It's not on.
Someone muted it.
Oh, okay.
Matthew. Sorry about that.
I had it with Zoom.
Right. Zoom was easier. Counselor Bethel, the AM Water Treatment Plant uses submersible membranes to treat the water. And so, that project is funding for one of the four, four cells of membranes that we have, and these particular membranes have, are failing prematurely. Typically, we get, we're guaranteed a 10-year, not guaranteed, we are promised a 10-year life on the membranes. Our last sets of membranes lasted 12 to 15 years, so usually 10 years is, is easily attained. But these particular membranes are only maybe six years old, and they're failing, and were actually costing us money and chemicals and staff time to maintain. So, they're going to have to be replaced out of cycle. So, we do put money away in the Water Capital Reserve to replace these on a 10-year basis. These are going to have to be replaced at least three or four years early. So, that's why we put this project on the list. It's an unplanned significant expenditure that we thought might be a good use of these funds, because although we are saving, we are not, we were not anticipating replacing these membranes now. And I think maybe Peter has information about the comments that were received and why it dropped off the list. I don't know about that part, but that's why the project was put on the list.
Director Bailey, do you have any recourse with regard to something failing so much ahead of schedule? Is there...
Well, it's just like, when you buy a car, and you think, "This car will last me 10 years," but you only get a three-year warranty, and then it...
That's my question, warranty, any recourse?
Yeah, no, the warranty is, is one year. And so, we do have the manufacturer is helping us try to find solutions, because they obviously, we're obviously not going, we would ask the council not to replace them with the same membranes. We would go with a competitor, and they don't want that either. So, and it, it would be great if we could figure out what's going on. So, they are helping us to try to understand what's happening with these membranes, but, so that's, that's the reason why it's on this list.
Thank you. So, it's considered like your oil filter, right? Just, they've gave, go out and change the filter.
Yeah, they do, I mean, and typically, they've, they've lasted longer than this, so we're a little confused as to why this is happening, but that's where we are.
Thank you. Give me a bad batch. Thank you very much, Director. I think Counsel Olson has something.
Are they plugging up, or are they falling apart?
They are, well, you could say they're plugging up. That would be a really gross simplification. So, they, they're like straws, and they do have to be backwashed and cleaned. They do, you know, plug up, and what happens is the volume of water that can pass through them is, gets reduced, and then you know it's time to backwash them. So, there's a standard number of gallons that you typically can get through a set of membranes, and then you backwash. And in our other cells, we're getting, you know, 10 times as many gallons, or 100 times as many gallons through the membranes. These are being, have, having to be backwashed quickly, which wastes water and energy. And they're also having, we also have to do a, this is really technical, we have to do a really like deep acid wash on them every now and then, on all of them, but we happen to do that quite often on these, which is expensive, you have to buy extra acid to wash them. So, it's just, they're not pulling as much water through as they should.
Thank you, Director.
Are these membranes still more desirable than a standard water plant like we have
on the Biden Street?
There are pros and cons. I would say overall, membrane filtration is more desirable. It reduces, it removes much smaller pollutants, you know, down to the micron level of pollutants. So, for instance, you know, bacteria and things that might sneak through a sand filter would be, would not make it through this type of membrane filter. So, generally speaking, membranes are better.
And I wouldn't, I probably wouldn't notice the difference when I washed down my pills in the morning.
Well, you're getting a mixture of both, but I would, I can talk forever about water treatment, but that's not really why you're here, so...
Thanks. I like to hear about water treatment, too.
Sure.
Thanks.
Y'all get some coffee and have that conversation. Thank you very much, Director.
Thanks, Chris.
Again, welcome back.
Yeah, I don't bother with that bottled stuff.
Yeah. I do have a couple of things on the list that was approved. If any other council, we got, okay with me going?
Are those approved?
No, these aren't approved, these are recommendations. So, I see on here, there's a few things, the generator for raw water pump station, 1 million. Most of this stuff is tied, the big dollars are tied to water. None of those are in the list that's already on the budget for the, for the Water Department?
You're asking if they're in this year's budget?
Or are they currently, I'm sorry, I should have had you stay. So, I mean, some of these projects, you know, 2.3 composting capacity, but Millersburg, not Millers, Republic Waste does our composting.
No.
So, we don't send anything out there for compost?
The compost, the composting project that's listed there is the new composting facility we're building for our wastewater solids. So, it's a treatment process.
Not the grass stuff, not the grass.
It's not the PRC.
Okay.
That Republic operates. To answer your question, the generator for the raw water pump station is not a budgeted project. We considered having it in the budget, but it's so much money for an event that we considered unlikely to happen, that we took it out of the budget. And then, in the ice storm, we would have definitely benefited from having that generator. So, it was something we proposed, because it is something that, you know, if we don't get these funds, we're not likely to build it. So, that's, you know, that's was the thinking behind that project. The composting project that's on here, currently in the approved budget, and it's under construction right now, is the first phase of composting at the wastewater treatment plant, which is dealing with the untreated, undigested solids at the, at the wastewater plant. And so, we're using an approved composting process to turn those wastewater solids into a compost that can be used by anybody in their garden, in landscaping, et cetera. So, we have enough money to build a facility that will process 25% of our wastewater solids. The remaining 75% is still going to the landfill. This project that's proposed here would take us from 25% to 50%. And we do plan to do that, but it's not in the current biennial budget, it's in one of the out-years on the CIP. So, this would allow us to expand to 50% sooner. There was a question in the review packet about where would this be happening, and we do have room at the wastewater treatment plant for the composting facilities being built now, and to expand beyond 50%. This would just expand it there at the treatment plant. At some point, we would need to go off-site if the city decided to compost 100% of our solids, we would need to look for property, but we're ways away from that right now. So, that would be happening on-site. And then the Cox Creek Interceptor, which is the other wastewater project on the list, is a very expensive project. The actual request was for $7.6 billion, which is the price tag of the next phase of that project, which would have used almost all of this money. So, that is in the CIP. That project is so big, it's being built in phases, each of which is at least like $5 million. It's a huge project. And this phase is in fiscal year '24, '25 of the CIP. So, it's planned for, but we're having to save, it's so big, we are not going to do significant sewer investments, and we're saving our money to try to get there. This funding would help us get that project done sooner, and, which is an important project for the development and the residents on the east of I-5. That is a major interceptor that brings all the sewage from everything, sort of Timberland Park and out into the undeveloped areas out there, and is currently, you know, almost at capacity. So, we need to expand this pipe in order to support that part of town, and that's the other project that we proposed here.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Councilors, have any other questions?
Yes.
Counsel Smith?
I'll yield to other people.
Counsel Johnson?
Yes. One thing I believe is that we should not do feel-good projects. I mean, everything's great, but they have to be something that, maybe we don't have the money for. I like the composting capacity improvements, because that's going to save us money in the long run. It's not an operational thing, it's not paying for employees or anything like that, but if we have this, it's going to save us from taking our waste to the landfill. And so, it's a lot of money, but then, like I said, it'll save us money in the long run. The other one that I'm looking at is upgrading the storage area and network, and I'm not exactly sure, I mean, I read it over about three times, but it sounds like storage and updating, upgrading, updating, that might save staff time, and, you know, upgrade the, what's the word? The system that we have right now. And that's a reasonable amount of money, but, you know, like, book may go for the library and... But, you know, like Bookmobile for the library and, oh, and another thing. We have been putting off doing, replacing playground equipment in our parks for years. And I just wonder how long we can go before, you know, there are liability and, and whatever. And so that's another thing that I think is important. It's a, it'd be a one-time shot that we replace something, but we wouldn't have to worry about putting it in the budget in the future or the CIP. So that's another one that I have. You know, so it's, it's hard to spend money because there's so much to do. But I don't want it on, like Peter said, operations and maintenance, things that we have. Yeah, yeah. So that, that's what I have. Thank you.
So Counselor Bartholomew?
I am very in favor of the improvements for the, like the, what Director Bailey was explaining to us. Because not only are they helping us to manage what we have right now, but it is also helping us manage future development. And that's going to put a higher impact on our systems. And that's what we're trying to do is to increase our development, increase our taxes. But then, then that's going to put a big stressor on these pieces. And that's why I was concerned about that membrane that was failing. And so I brought that up because if we are having pieces of our system that are falling apart or failing and we're trying to build and put more stress on those pieces, I think we need to take that into consideration. I appreciate also the, the issues of dealing with some of these smaller pieces that would be nice to have and I think are good. And then there's the, the possibility of having more infrastructure dollars coming. And so I'm trying to balance that in my mind with this demand here.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Olson, you have?
Well, I just want to say, I was hoping we could use this money to help solve our homelessness problem and our lack of affordable, single-family housing. And I don't see that this provides much in that direction.
The entire list wasn't included in here either, just in the public. And this one here?
The agenda packet for the, for this week.
Pages, pages 11 through?
Yeah, there you go.
Through 50.
Oh, it's in the table, okay. I thought you had a list. I read that. So my only concern is spending over half of it on one project. And there's so many things we can do with that money. So I struggle with that number, especially if it's in our, in our current plan in the future. That's just my two cents. I think that, that there can be more things done with that 4.15, 4.5 million dollars. And I hope that we get a chance to discuss that further. Is it currently in our capital improvement plan underwater or public works?
Might as well sit up front, Director Bailey.
I just missed you. Finally get a chance to see your face in person.
I know, I'm so happy. I mean, I used to have a seat, but that's okay. That's fine. So the thing about the Cox Creek Interceptor is how this, I think, would play out is we, we currently have, we've completed the first two phases. And the new line ends on Santiam Highway near Waverly Lake. No, Old Salem Road near Waverly Lake. And so we have, the project this year, we have a, a capital project scheduled for this year in the budget that's going to be the next phase, which goes from there down to North Shore Drive. That's a $5 million project, 5.2. The next phase, we don't have the money to do the next phase. And we're trying not to borrow money. So we're saving our sewer reserves as much as we can to do the next phase, which goes from North Shore under I-5 to the edge of the airport. That's a $7 million project. The last two phases go under the airport, under Price Road, and through Timberland Park to Goldfish Farm. That's another $7 million. So it's going to be at least five to seven years before we can get there. What this funding would do is allow us to, we would essentially have to dedicate this funding to the project that's happening this year, the $5 million project. Because the next phase isn't going to be ready within the deadline that this ARPA money has to be spent. So what that would allow us to do is just move up the timeline. So now, instead of it taking us seven to however many years to get this project done, we're going to cut three or four years off of that timeline. The, I understand it's a lot of money, it's a huge amount of money. But the, this is the impact. What, the potential problem that we're looking at, which I hesitate to even describe, is that someone will come in with a development that needs to tie into this interceptor on the east side of I-5. And there's not enough capacity in that interceptor for that development. What do we do? Well, Matthew can correct me if I get this wrong, but we either have to accommodate that development or we have to declare a moratorium. If you declare a moratorium, it doesn't mean the development doesn't happen. It just means you've put yourself on a timeline to fix your infrastructure to let that development happen. So we're trying to look seven to 10 years out at what's going to happen on the east side of I-5 and get these investments done so that we're not in that situation. So it is a huge amount of money, but one way or another, it has to happen. We have to have this line to have that development continue out there. And that's where there is developable land, is east and south. So, you know, what this project does is move all of that investment up at least a number of years so that then we can take, if there is more infrastructure money that comes down, which we hope that there is. We really are hoping that that's for, there's a lot there for streets, honestly. You'll notice there's no street projects here. You know, this funding specifically was targeted towards water and wastewater infrastructure. It was one of the specific things called out in the ARPA rules. So if there is additional water wastewater funding coming, well, then maybe we can move that timeline up even further. But as it is, we're, you know, we're struggling every year to try to figure out how to fund this major capital improvement. And we're honestly putting off other investments that need to be made so that we can save to get these in the CIP. And if you look in the wastewater section of the CIP, there's a couple of years where we're not really doing much. When typically in past years, there'd be four or five major projects, we're doing one, you know. So that's our, that's our strategy. So that's why the, this project was put forward. And, you know, I understand that it was cut, it's not fully funded. And there's just, there are a ton of needs. You know, it's hard to figure out how to spend this money. But that's our strategy to try to find projects that fit within the rules of ARPA and that help us, you know, get our investments made so that in the future, you know, the citizens of Albany are not having to, in a short notice, find this money to make these investments. We can help manage our rate increases and manage our debt so we can get these things done without having to do those types of things.
Mr. Mayor, earlier this evening, we were talking about housing affordability and certainly the cost of infrastructure affects housing affordability. So one of the reasons we brought this forward was because of that reason, that we're trying to work on addressing the problem of housing affordability. And to have such a big assist in that direction takes a lot of the load off of ratepayers and SDCs in the future.
So I, I just wanted to add one thing, just so you guys had all the information. Here, we, as some of you may know, the staff applied for a TGM grant, so Transportation Growth Management Grant for the east Albany area. We were successful in that grant and we've had our first kickoff meeting. The East Albany Plan will be a project that is, is transportation-driven, but is going to be looking at all the areas in east, well, Albany east of I-5 and looking at all the zoning. And, and the Cox Creek Interceptor project, as Chris indicated, is, is crucial to development of the lands, especially on the east side of Timberland Park, which is where the vacant land is. So it has been a significant challenge even for some of the developments that's out there now to verify that there is capacity in some of those lines. It's a pretty, pretty major project. So I just, not, not trying to necessarily support Chris's project, but I do. Just making sure you guys had all the information, so.
Well, one of my issues is that I've been on council for three years, or going on three years, and it's always about east Albany, north Albany. I've heard very little about south, other than the Lennar Homes going out on Columbus. You know, we have buildable land down in south Albany as well. You know, one of my goals is getting us a grocery store if we have enough homes to support that. But everything we're talking about now is taking, taking grocery further and further away from south Albany. And that's a concern for me. And that's one of the reasons I'm having an issue with that particular project. You know, all the building I'm hearing about is other places, but nothing in Moore 2, you know, south Albany. And there's only one project since I've been on council that's going in over there, and that's the 265 on Columbus Road. So how was, how was it, how were these, you know, the long-term planning? Why is west Albany rarely, southwest Albany rarely looked at?
So the south part of Albany is actually, about 10 years ago, we did the South Albany Area Plan, where we've actually have a, a plan that's laid out for all of that area on the south side of town. The challenge has been utilities, honestly. Getting utilities out to the south end, which the Henshaw Farms project that you referred to, that Lennar is doing, that, that made a major leap in getting utilities out in that direction. You know, they extended sewer and water 1,200 feet down Columbus where it never was before.
So is that going to support future development down there?
That, that absolutely will. That was major infrastructure that was limiting development down there. That's why, part of the reason why council entered into an infrastructure funding agreement with the developer and used some SDC money to help fund the, the street portion of that in exchange for some connection fees.
So can we do the same thing with this particular interceptor?
So as Matthew said, that utilities were the problem in south Albany. The interesting thing about this project is that it's, it's going through already developed land in the south shore neighborhood, and then it's going under the public interstate, the public airport, and the public park. So the improvements that have to happen in those sections of the pipe will be paid for by public funds. So the developer in the, in the south Albany case pays for the capacity improvements needed on that line. It's, you know, associated with that private development. There will be no private development under the interstate, under the airport, and through the park. So we have to get that pipe big enough at the end of Timberland Park, close to Goldfish Farm Road, that those future private investments and those developments, the pipe is big enough to receive all those. So the, the, these phases of the project need to be paid for by the city. The future building that happens out there will be paid for by the developers.
That helps. Thank you very much, Director. Thank you, Director Rutgers. Counsel?
I have a few things if I may.
Counselor Smith?
I, when I first saw the, the list of projects, I thought, I was underwhelmed, as my mother would say. But I really appreciate the, your explanations for why these are here and what they mean to Albany. As long as I've been, well, I'm going to say probably for the last 15 to 20 years, people have been talking about the limitations on capacity on east I-5. There was a talk of a Sonic restaurant going in over there years ago. And we said, can't do it, no sewer capacity. That's a restaurant. It's not the, the great potential that exists east of I-5. And it's, we can't do it without this interceptor. I appreciate the description of the involvement of public property that it goes through. That's stunning. I need to find another word.
That's pretty much sums it up, yeah.
But I, and, and I, and I understand Mayor Johnson's concern about putting so much money towards one project. But this is a lot of money that fell from the sky.
It's a future project.
And it, this, yes, this project, the composting facility, the raw water pump station, all in my mind can be directly linked to public health. And to me, when I think of COVID, I think of how does that affect public health? And this is the public health of an entire community that are affected by this. Those are all needed to solve an immediate problem and to prevent the, the problem from getting worse in the future. And to look to the future so that we can develop and safely. The upgrade of the wireless servers and the storage area network, one of the things that the pandemic showed us was how dependent we are on the internet and technology in general and making sure that it's safe, reliable, and available. These will help with, with that, community-wide and for the, the city, our city operations in particular. And I, it just seems like such a tiny amount, which is typical for the library. They never ask for much. They never get much. But a Bookmobile, I see as a, as a natural extension of their, all of the cool things that they did to keep the library relevant and, and available to library patrons throughout the last year and a half. We hand-delivered things to people, we did curbside pickup, we were at Farmer's Market, the whole thing. And this is, this is an extension of that. A community this size without a Bookmobile is kind of rare. And I, it's some, not everybody can get to Farmer's Market. Not everybody can drive to the library to pick up their stuff. So I, I think that's a, a very small ask and it solves a very,
Big problem.
A decent problem, yeah.
A real problem, yeah.
Yeah. So I, I, and I, it goes without saying, but I'm saying it anyway. The ADA improvements in the parks are necessary. And anything we can do to chip away at that block, we ought to do it. I also want to address Counselor Johnson's comment about the playground replacements. We have been replacing playgrounds as, if not one a year, but then maybe one every other year or so. And we've had a lot of donations from private organizations that have, that have done some of those and others have been budgeted. I don't know where we are with, with that right now.
Thank you, Director Zinedine.
So I know Sunrise Park was the latest one to be updated. Prior to that, I feel bad as I don't have all the information as to when they were rotating through. I do know that based on the 2007 master plan, there were a whole slew of playgrounds that were identified to be replaced and that many of them have just been hanging out on the unfunded part of our CIP list just because we don't have funds. So thanks to the City Services Feed and thanks to some of the sacrifices that we made last year, it looks like Henderson Park will be the next online.
I was just going to ask about Henderson, thank you.
Which is incre-
It's over on-
On Calipoya.
Not Broad Elbin, is it? It's?
Yep, down on Calipoya.
Calipoya.
Calipoya, okay.
So yeah, it, head-on back. It's a lovely little space and it's a park that has a lot of great memories, I'm sure, for folks in the community. But it definitely needs an update. And there are things there that you, you, they're little treasures you can't find anywhere else in any playground. So we do have a lot of work left in looking at what City Services Feeds, you know, funds will help us. You know, 10 years from now, we're still going to be plugging away and replacing playgrounds and, you know, park roofs and, shelter roofs and all that kind of good stuff. So the ADA improvement dollars would help us move forward in that. As moving forward, we're going to put 200, sorry, $20,000 towards ADA improvements moving forward every year. But $20,000 goes fast. It's a section of sidewalk in some cases. So this would allow us to really start to, to chip away at some, maybe the larger ticket items that we would have to save, as Chris was talking about before, many years up to, to afford.
So thank you very much, Director. You're still looking at other funds that could come in, do grants and things like that? You're still looking at other funds that could come in, do grants and things like that?
We are-
It's a constant.
Anybody has any ideas, send them our way.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Counselor Novak, you have anything?
Yeah, just a question, perhaps I need clarification, but a couple times now, Director Ledain just mentioned that thanks to the City Services Fee, we're able to do these things. And my understanding was that the City Services Fee was an emergency situation in order to ensure that we wouldn't lose fire and police. Did I miss something?
No, that, it's, it was not an, the City Services Fee was, if you recall, it was aimed at restoring funds back to departments in very close to the same ratio in which they had to be taken away from departments. So what that would have meant for police and what that would have meant for fire, and what it did mean for parks last year, was the loss of quite a few positions. Now, remember, we talked earlier tonight about how Parks was the only department that was hit early and hard in the pandemic, right? So they laid, they had to lay off a lot of people almost, almost immediately, but over the course of the last year. One of the things that we don't, you know, that is not generally recognized is that over the years, our, our reserves and our equipment replacement funds have been declining, and declining, declining, so that we could hold on to personnel, to staff. So I think wisely, in the Parks Department case, rather than restore staff, who would maybe then have to be cut again two years from now, they are addressing this over $5 million backlog of maintenance needs. So while it's hard to classify that as an emergency, when you restore the funds to the department directors to use in the best way they see fit, that is the best way in the Parks Department to use those funds. In the Fire Department, they're keeping six firefighters. The Police Department, as you know, has their own challenges in terms of recruiting new police officers, but that's how they will use their funds as well. So it's much more nuanced and much more complex than just simply restoring public safety positions.
I'm just going off what we were told, sir.
Well, that, that was what was told. We did, we did talk about that from the very beginning, that those funds would, would be rolled back to the departments to be used in the best way that they, that they saw fit. And then certainly in the public safety departments, that's exactly what happened, is they restored as many positions as they could.
Anything additional, anyone? Counsel?
I just have one question.
Johnson?
For Chris. Now, say with the Cox Creek Interceptor, and Peter, this is to, so we get-
Get on mic, please, Counselor Johnson. Thank you. I can't hear you, that's all.
I know. If I touch it, it'll go. Anyway, so we get the rest of the money next year, is that right, Peter?
That's correct, yes. Next May.
What I'm wondering, Chris, would half of what is listed here for the Cox Creek Interceptor, would that work if the other half was like next year? I mean, would, I don't know what your, your process or what your schedule is.
Well, the recommendations here total the total amount, $8.4 million, which is what the city has been allocated. So we've already received 4.2 million. So the way the federal government is giving it to the cities is half in one fiscal year and half in the next. So the cities receive 4.2 million, and then we'll get the other 4.2 million in the spring or sometime. But this list represents the full amount. So if the Cox Creek Project were suspended according to this list, then we would get $4.5 million at some point between now and next spring, when the second half of the money came in. So that, that, that's the amount of the 8.4 total.
I see.
That's the amount that has been allocated towards that project.
So the total is 4.5, but we're only getting 4.2 right now. So would the 2.2 be good for you, I mean, for the Cox Creek Interceptor this year and then-
That's what's going to happen.
You know, I'm, I'm just trying to figure this out.
Yeah, so the way it would work out, I think, from an accounting standpoint, which is, I think, what you're asking, is, so the, the Cox Creek Project, we have a phase of the Cox Creek Project that's going to be built in this current fiscal year, so sometime between, before next July 1st. And essentially, what this would do would pay for almost all of that. And then the money that we had budgeted, so we take, took money out of sewer reserves and budgeted for that sewer capital project, would just go back to sewer reserves. So essentially, what happens is, we've budgeted 5.2 million for this year's Cox Creek Project. If we get 4.5 million out of the ARPA funds, then 4.5 million from what we budgeted will go right back to reserves, and then we will plan the next phase of the Cox Creek Project, $4.5 million earlier than we would have, right? So we, we had planned from this year till fiscal year '25 to have to save up $7.6 million. Now we, we only have to, we would only have to save up $3 million for the next phase, so. See, it would just flow back and forth between the capital, sewer capital and capital reserves. But we would have to designate the ARPA money for the project that's happening this year because there will be an accounting that the federal government will want from us. So we'll show the receipts for the construction this year that adds up to $4.5 million, and that's where we could show that the ARPA money had been spent. So it doesn't matter, really, long story short, doesn't matter that we're only getting half the money now and half the money later. By the time we get the full amount, we could fund this project.
Well, I appreciate the explanation, because that got me to, they probably got me to that point.
Okay. It was really long-winded.
I know, it's complicated.
Mr. Mayor, if I will.
Please.
Chris had mentioned, Director Bailey had mentioned the accounting for the use of these funds. So there, there will be an accounting for them. So that's one of the things that's figured in our assessment of each of these projects. There was, there was some talk about why there wasn't a streets project here, and Director Bailey briefly mentioned the hope for a transportation bill in the future and funds for that. But if you'll remember from your agenda packet, what we are allowed to use by Treasury Guidelines is we're allowed to invest in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. So streets are conspicuously absent there. That is not something that we can use these funds for. So I want people to, not just here, but who are watching on television, to understand that that, if you're wondering why there isn't a streets project on there, that's a, that's a direct reason why that's not there.
Thank you, Peter, for that explanation. Any other councils have anything?
Good discussion.
Yeah.
Good discussion.
Thank you, Directors, for your input and your feedback. It really helps us a great deal. Go ahead, Counsel Olson.
Yeah, I've got a question that occurs to me. Did the federal government, when they came up with this idea, were they concerned more about cities that were having a hard time paying for all the good stuff that they need? Or were they concerned about businesses and the public in general that suffered because of the COVID virus? And some businesses were on the verge, or maybe had gone out of business because of a lack of, a lack of normalcy, let's say?
The answer is yes.
Do you have any feeling about that?
No, they, there was, you remember there was the CARES Act before the, before the ARPA funding, right? So that came down through the state to localities, and then there was, then there's the, the ARPA funds that were made available. I don't know the legislative history and what in, what went into the back and forth between the House and the Senate, and eventually got the President to sign it, but I know that everything that you just talked about was a concern. So, you know, there, if, if, if you, if you would like to take a look, or I can, I can try to do a little research for you, the League of Oregon Cities has, has pretty much had a compendium on all the assistance, all the federal assistance that's been made available. So they are concerned about businesses, they're concerned about ratepayers, people, they're concerned about underrepresented communities, they're concerned about infrastructure and public health. So there is, and each one of those has had their own separate efforts to try to, to try to fund.
Yeah, and those are all included in this dispensation of federal funds.
Well, these, these funds, if you remember, they came directly to cities to use based on the criteria that the Treasury Department gave us. So there is a lot of other opportunities. You heard Counselor Novak talk about the Restaurant Revitalization Fund. Last time we met, you heard Rob Romeo talk about an airport grant that we got through ARPA. So there's many, many more components to the overall American Rescue Plan Act. This is just the one that came direct to cities for use for, under those five criteria.
I dare say, though, a city, forgive me, I don't mean to interrupt, a city is not going to be told by the federal government, oops, we're sorry, you get nothing. The city gets their money, the city's already received their money, the city is not, and I'm, I'm, I don't, I'm, it's a good thing, I don't want cities to have funds promised and then not provided. I'm just saying, that's not going to happen with the federal government. The government funds government, it's not quite as, I don't know how to say it. I'm just, I just don't think it's going to be, you know, they, if they promise this, if they promise, if government promises something to government, from what I've witnessed and experienced, there's no problem with the government getting what the government promises the government. When it comes to these other concerns that are non-governmental, like business, like individuals, like whatever, that's where there's, there's not a problem saying, oops, we're sorry, it's not going to happen. It's, it's not going to happen. And it, you know-
Well, Counselor Novak, I think actually, in both cases, the, the federal government could claw that money back. If we were to use these monies in a way that was not allowed by the Treasury Guidelines, they could have us pay it back to them. And then they would have those monies to use somewhere else, another city, another state that could use them. Similarly, with the businesses, if they, if they don't give them out to the businesses, but the, the Congress has appropriated them, they'll take those monies and use them for some, some other purpose.
Yes, sir. I guess I wasn't clear. But I'm not talking about a misuse of funds. You're going according to the guidelines, you're using the money according to what was presented, this is how it has to be done. I'm just saying that in the case of certain businesses who were using the money as it was supposed to be used and had every intention of using that money, that money was clawed back, not because they did something wrong, but because the SBA was sued and they're like, and therefore, these individuals who had every intention of using the money properly for the intended purpose were never given the funds. And I'm saying that won't happen with the federal government to another government, a city government, a state government, you're not going to see that happen, I don't think, unless that entity, that state government, that city government, does something wrong, where the way the system is set up, it's, it's just not, I don't think, necessarily a level playing field, is all I'm saying. That's all. If that makes sense. I, I hope you understand what I was trying to explain.
So thank you, Peter, for that explanation. Any other councils have anything? So what would you like to do? Help see them again Wednesday with this list, or want any modifications to it?
This is on your agenda for Wednesday as well. If there's any information you'd like me to bring back to you, let me know. You, you don't have to make a decision tonight.
I will be sending questions. So thank you. Okay, so we'll see you Wednesday night. Next on the agenda is business from the council. Who would like to go first today?
You're volunteering me? Counselor Johnson volunteered me to go first, if that's all right with you, sir. And I will just say that I, I'll probably think of something the minute I leave. I'll, I'll decline to share anything further at this moment. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have nothing this evening.
Counselor Smith has nothing this evening? Counsel Olson?
Oh, yeah. With the remodel of the room here, I seem to have lost my junk drawer. And it's handy to have an extra pair of glasses, an extra pen, extra hearing aid batteries. And was it an oversight or whatever, to not put our junk drawers back?
No, we'll, we'll look into that. Matt had to make some modifications to get your microphones, so we'll see what we can do about drawers as well, or some other kind of storage.
I'd like my drawer back.
Yeah.
I would love a drawer.
Counselors, anyone else?
I have nothing tonight.
Nothing?
I said the screw holes are still here.
Counselor Johnson?
I have something, but I, it slipped my mind, so I'll bring it up Wednesday.
Okay. Thank you very much, Counselors. I, I have a couple things. I noticed, I was at the airport for the Amelia Earhart with the 99 celebration. We had people flying from all over, and it was wonderful to see these, these women of education, aviation fly in. I met a woman from Alabama, and I, she drove, she came the furthest, so I presented her with Jim of the Willamette Valley by Edward Loy, one of our local artists or writers. But it was nice to see those, see them in town. It was a nice experience for me. Counselor Bartholomew joined me, the Chair of the Airport Commission joined me. So it was a great event. But I did notice that the VASI that was destroyed a few months ago, a month and a half ago, was still laying out there, and I was curious to find out on my own research, has there been a report filed for damage at our airport to the FAA or NTSB? Because it was vehicle-involved damage. I wasn't sure if that had been reported. I hadn't heard anything. So, you again. Okay.
It's been busy. Yes, so the FAA was notified, and we filed an insurance claim and are working through the process to get the funds to replace it. And I think, I'd have to check for sure, but I think the FAA has approved us to replace it with a similar VASI. We do have a project in the future to replace the VASIs with PAPIs, which is a more modern version. So it's not going to be anything super fancy, but we'll get a new one in.
Thank you for that. I appreciate that. And I think that's pretty much it for me today. So go business from the city manager.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
I just want, there's still a little bit of, maybe a little bit of confusion about the City Services Fee. The council's strategic plan has four themes, right? And a safe city is one of them. A great neighborhoods is another one of them. So these, I have tried to make the point before about the interconnectedness of city services. And certainly, the parks and the quality of the parks has an impact on public safety. So it, I think it's just something that bears remembering when we, you know, obviously, public safety functions that we have are the, are the, the ones that take up the majority of our general fund, but they are all tied together. And when we talk about restoring funding to, to a limited extent, certainly the parks and the library play a big role in, in every aspect of the quality of life in our city, as do public safety agencies. The only other thing I was going to mention was that we have, thanks to Matt Harrington, got a boom extension, a mic extension for Counselor Bartholomew. And I would say, Counselor Johnson, if you would like to take advantage of the same thing, we can probably do that for you, and maybe Counselor Smith as well. I fly in a helicopter, I'm used to having a mic right up next to my lips, and that's sometimes what you have to do to be heard. Well, then you raise the danger of feedback, so we will get this right, and if, if that's something you'd like to try, just let us know.
I have another alternative that I would-
A caller mic, yeah.
I declined tonight. I won't do that Wednesday.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
That it?
Anything.
Any other councils have anything before we close the meeting? I'll call the German in a meeting, 5:44.
One minute early. Well done, sir.